Talk to the doctor, or however you all want to. This is a motion. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the emergency ordinance as written.
On the second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second as written. Do I hear discussion?
I do, just based on attorney consideration, I have to recuse myself from this vote because I have rental property on the island, and it would not be prudent for me to make a decision that would impact my financial gain or loss. So I'm going to recuse myself and step away from discussion.
Thank you, Brian. Councilman begin, and just so, if anybody has questions, I too have a rental property, but I am living in it, and I've lived in it for several years. So it's not an active rental property for short-term rentals, if anybody asks.
Well, let me also say that I have a rental that we have right across the street. It's always been long-term. In fact, it's vacant right now, and I'm probably not going to re-lease it. It's probably going to be my next spec home, so just for full disclosure.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Moore.
I'd like to phone a friend.
Cash, cash.
No, this is a serious issue. If we don't laugh, we'll go crazy. Dr. Edward O'Brien is Chief Medical Officer at MUSC, and the Director of Telehealth Program has been at the forefront coordinating the response to coronavirus for the Medical University of South Carolina, and has agreed to go on the record and answer some questions for City Council as to how we coordinate our response here.
Thank you.
Call that phone close to your mouth.
Hello?
Hey, Dr. O'Brien?
Yes?
This is John Moore from the City of Isle Pums.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing fine. You are on the speakerphone and the microphone with full City Council and any of our residents who are watching our live stream via Facebook.
Okay.
We are in the midst of additional restrictions to our island in the wake of the coronavirus and trying to promote public safety and public health, and we have some questions about what is happening from the healthcare facility side and looking for some expert recommendations from you.
Sure, no problem.
So I guess, just to...
Would you ask Dr. O'Brien to describe his position at MUSC so everybody can hear live stream?
Yeah, can you, Dr. O'Brien, describe your position and your role and kind of your qualifications to be our medical expert here?
Sure, no problem. Dr. Edward O'Brien, Emergency Medicine Physician at MUSC, also the Executive Director of MUSC Health Solutions, Chief Medical Officer for MUSC Business Health, and the Director of Telemedicine Services for Business Health. I've been in charge of implementing the telehealth platforms and algorithms for coronavirus screenings, testings, referrals, and treatments for the state of South Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recommendations?
All right, so over our chain recommendations, right now, we have a proposed ordinance that restricts short-term rentals, which is overnight accommodations that are less for restricting any check-ins beginning 10th Thursday, March 26th through April the 30th, 2020. That would allow visitors currently checked in to stay until the end of their existing reservation. That is the current proposed ordinance, and I guess maybe we can start off with your general reaction and advice and recommendations on that proposed ordinance.
Sure. I think that sounds very reasonable. I mean, I'll say it's an uptick in the number of screenings and tests that are coming back positive, and we've noticed early on that many of those coming back positive were travelers, and many of those travelers were from New York. The way the pandemic appears to be playing out, to a large degree, is that the United States will be affected by coronavirus everywhere. However, there are going to be hotspots, just like in Italy. Northern Italy is a hotspot, but the rest of Italy is affected but not as badly. So the concern would be that people are coming down or renting here. I don't know where theirs come from, but I assume a lot come from some places that are housing, such as the Northeast. So the idea would be to keep people out of our rental markets or out of our area, if at all possible, and so this has borne number to a large degree. There's a lot of good evidence, too, that virus can live on surfaces and in households for... Some people have set up to 14 days, but it's probably closer to weeks. I would be concerned that turnover of houses without proper disinfection could spread virus even further.
John, may we ask his definition of proper disinfection? Is it possible to properly disinfect to a level that would ensure the safety? Normal commercial cleaning?
That's a great question. I would say without adequate policing, cleaning crews house to house, I would say it is not really possible to do that in a short term, because there are only certain agents that are approved. As you probably know, bleach has to be a certain concentration. You have to hit every area that could be touched, you know, have the air filters. It's a difficult task even for the hospital. So I would say that's probably not possible.
Thank you. Question, Dr. O'Brien. This is Jimmy Carroll. We're talking about not only, you know, our reservations of guests coming here, but we're also discussing, you know, other measures, whether it be essential services, construction, yard maintenance. Should we take precautions along those lines, or do we just self-distance with these types of contractors?
That's a very good question. I would think, I'll say this, I think having locals provide local services that aren't in existence, that those services are, it sounds like a lot of those are outdoor services, with limited amounts of people, one or two workers at a time, usually less than 30 work in any environment at any given time, I would say is relatively safe, as long as those people know to isolate if they have any conditions and to access a telemedicine platform for screening and testing. I would say that's a lot safer than having people from out of town who have traveled or flown come into the island.
Councilman Moore?
Yes, sir, Dr. O'Brien, this is Jimmy Moore. My question would be, the ordinance, as it's being presented, is through April 30th. How would you feel if it was just set up for 14 or 15 days, and then take a look at it later if we need to extend it? That's what a lot of people are asking me.
Gotcha. I think it's going to be tough. So, you know, I think in 14 days, we'll have a better handle on what the outbreak is going to be like in our community. However, a community like a New York, you know, the Northeast where it's hit really hard, or LA, there's not going to be much presence in 14 days between us. It's going to be closer to a month. If you did a 14-day, it might make it a 14-day, but an automatic 14-day renewal, and you have to vote to mix the renewal as opposed to having to vote on, you know, it putting in place again, that might make sense, but it's going to be longer than two weeks.
Councilmember Smith, do you have a question?
You know, you guys covered a lot of my questions, and I guess I'm also concerned about the, especially hotels and condos where you have a greater concentration of people, and would like, if you could just speak to that, about the proximity that comes with hotels, as well as shared swimming pools with large condo complexes or, you know, resort area.
Sure. As to the pools, I would follow the governor's recommendation of the pools, to limit, you know, the crowds to ten or less than a business, or preferably three or less in any of those pools. It sounds like those pools may be larger than that, so it might not be possible. But as to the hotels, you're right, any more certain environments is worse. So more people in a more confined environment is obviously significantly worse for spread of the virus. And a lot of hotels have sectional air systems, and that several rooms might be supplied by the same air system, which can make it challenging as far as virus spread. There's a lot of good data that's a way it's spread in a couple of pharma complexes in China and Hong Kong. So that is a bit of, that's definitely a bit of an issue.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. O'Brien, this is Jesse Streepman. Just wanted to get your thoughts, the demographics we have here on Isle Pums. As I understand it, our average age on the island is 56 years old, and we also have over 30% of our residents are over 65 years old. Could you give us a little information about that particular demographic and how they may be even more impacted by someone that has the coronavirus that they're carrying, and how that could impact an island this small? If it was...
Sure, sure. I think, as you might have read, the virus appears to have a significant higher mortality. It has a higher morbidity and mortality. In other words, you know, people of an advanced age, and I don't call, it's affecting people, about 50% of people over 40, okay, so 40 and above. The older you are, especially over 55 and over 65, mortality goes up into the double-digit range. And what's not included in mortality is morbidity, which is an even higher percentage of those people end up needing hospitals and/or ICU care, which would be a big stretch on us here in our Charleston community, with, we're already preparing for a lot more patients. So it could be pretty severe for a population that's of an advanced age. And that's why preventing rental, even short-term, this is not something, it's hard to walk back. Once people are here, that's putting in infection, it's so hard, it's hard to walk backwards. That's why I was being proactive so importantly.
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks. I meant to ask this before, but I also have a concern about the actual people who'd be cleaning the facilities of a rental or hotel room, and whether they're at risk, if they're outside of, like, a hospital situation, if they don't have proper supervision, if they may also have a greater risk of getting the virus and spreading the virus.
Yes, that is certainly possible. I would recommend that people cleaning the houses during the pandemic use proper personal protective equipment, or PBE. This would include, more likely than not, an N95 mask while they clean, or at least a surgical mask, gloves, and to make sure they're using cleaning materials containing at least proper concentration of bleach, which is pretty common. But your question is accurate. Yes, it could put them at increased risk as well.
Doctor, additional question. How concerned are you at the existing hospital infrastructures being overwhelmed by an influx of people coming into the community? And I had one resident describe it as, if the lifeboats only build for 25, you know, we're not likely to be able to accommodate 50. And it seems to me that the prudent communities are not just looking out for the welfare of their own residents, but recognizing that we are putting increasingly our emergency personnel at risk when we overwhelm our facilities. How concerned are you about the facilities in this area being overwhelmed?
That's certainly one of our primary concerns. All of our senior leadership, either at MUSC, and Roper, and Trina, and Eze Cooper, are all staffing up. We're all trying to get as many ventilators online as possible. Got to make sure our ICUs are open and available, make sure people that don't need to be in the hospital are out. I mean, it's serious as I've ever seen it, and something in medicine. I mean, we are preparing for a significant influx. Now, we hope that doesn't happen, of course, but that's what we're preparing for. I mean, it's significantly more preparation than for a hurricane, for example.
Thank you.
Dr. O'Brien, Councilmember Jimmy Moore wanted to know if there were any projections that you could share with us that might help us, I think, understand what we're facing. Yeah, any kind of numbers that your organization has either, you know, calculated or had access to?
We don't have projection numbers per se. You know, we can only go by, you know, global mortality rates and global infection rates per capita. So, you know, based on that, what you're seeing, we do expect a large uptick in coronavirus infections within the next, I would say, 14 to 21, man. I would say 14 days, but then it takes another 14 days for those infectious signals to go away. So I can't give you exact numbers, unfortunately, because this disease doesn't act quite like that. Thank you. Wish I could, I understand.
Dr. O'Brien, Jesse Streepman again. As of today, the total number of confirmed cases in South Carolina is 342, and there's been seven deaths related to that. Is that, I mean, that's low numbers globally, obviously, but is that a higher rate than you would expect in terms of the death rate for the virus?
It's not, because the majority of those people were older. I think several were nursing home patients. Probably don't want to get past this truck right down outside, you know. So that death rate does seem, you know, potentially pretty decent. I think if you anticipate that you are about 14 days behind the curve, you can say probably 10 to 24 times the number that we have confirmed positive have the virus in the state at a minimum. If you want to do estimates based on statistical analysis that's been published. So, you know, multiply that by 10 or 24, probably a more accurate number compared to those that were currently infected. You know, mortality will track along with age fairly accurately, I would think. But I think we're kind of on pace. Now, I'll say this, South Carolina has done a lot of testing, but the lab results, because all the labs are overwhelmed, are taking a little bit longer to come back than we would like. So I think that number's going to start to increase, especially as we get more and more labs online and more testing complete. And that's another thing, if people were to come in from out of town and have symptoms, it puts a stress on our systems here to do their lab tests, because, you know, the results can be delayed by several days, and, you know, they could be traveling in between those times, we don't know. So that would be a big challenge.
Councilmember Smith, I think you have another question?
Yeah, thank you. One more question was just, if we went with, like, a 30-day, allow 30-day rentals, monthly rentals, would it be best to have a break in between those monthly rentals of, say, three days or a week to allow, if the virus, you know, on surfaces and that kind of thing, would that help in terms of preventing spread?
I'm not sure we have enough data to be able to say 100% that or not, because those things, where it lives on cardboard for over 24 hours, all that kind of stuff. Those tests were done under relatively ideal conditions. There is some data to show that high heat and high humidity make the virus last less long, which would be beneficial to us in South Carolina coming up in the next coming months. So I think more data will come out within the next, you know, 30 days, 14 to 30 days, that will give us the answer on that.
Dr. O'Brien, Jimmy Carroll speaking. We have some special circumstances on Isle Pums as for our public safety. We have a checkpoint as you enter Isle Pums. We have police there, you know, checking for IDs. I can't say we have protective gear. We're trying to stay a distance, but, you know, I want to make sure that we're doing what we can to keep our officers safe. And also, our public safety building, which is a joint police, it's under renovation, so we have our personnel in trailer. But we have contractors over there working, and general contractors, so I'm just worried, you know, is there any fear of their infecting, cross-infecting, equipment, vehicles? Anyway, anything that we should do specifically to protect our public safety personnel in this construction setting? Even though they really don't interact, but they are in and out of the building and probably walking by vehicles, we don't know if they're infected or not infected. But again, I'm worried about, we have a small police department, a small fire department. One infection could really spread and affect us terribly. So comments on that?
That's true. That's a good point. I think, you know, following just general sanitary guidelines, your EMS and fire are going to have canid side wipes. They should certainly wipe down their surfaces between their shifts, whether it's in their trucks or cars. They should do that. They can use the Clorox wipes, also will suffice, and use PBE when possible. If they're checking people's licenses at those checkpoints, make sure they use gloves and don't touch their faces. Surgical and/or cloth face masks are not unreasonable. They don't protect you from inhaling virus particles. However, they do protect you from touching your face, which is the way the virus typically gets into your system. So that's a consideration. I would say adequate social distancing between the contractors and your employees, as well as a mandatory policy of standing out and reporting symptoms if you should get sick. And we call this self-monitoring, where if any symptoms arise, a fever, cough, anything like that, you have to self-monitor, go to a virtual check-in, and get cleared, basically, before coming back to work.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Smith?
I'm done.
Okay. Any other questions for the doctor? Hearing none. Doctor, I can't thank you enough.
Huge thank you.
John, thank you for your contact.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
We're in debt to you.
Oh, thank you all. Take care.
Okay, back to our motion and second and discussion after hearing from a medical professional at MUSC. Do we have, yes, sir?
I think, Doctor, answer my big question. I don't know if the rest of you heard that, but a lot of people have been saying to me, shut it down for two weeks. But it sounded like to me, from his advice, that's really not prudent to do by any source of people, but it could be a lot worse. And he was very impressive. I think we really have to go with his recommendations. You know, I was originally for 14, but now I've switched to 30.
I would agree with that as well. It sounded to be like he's thinking that in just a couple of weeks, we won't even see a significant wrap-up for another couple of weeks. So I agree with Councilman Moore on that.
Okay, any other?
Do we think about, sorry, chief, but do we think about extending our checkpoints from the island to marry up with this ending of this ordinance, the short-term rental?
Yeah, I think that's where I was going, Kevin. I think we need to make them consistent. Absolutely. It's too much stuff. Chief, comments on that?
We're working on our staffing to make sure that we are taking care of them and giving them time off. I sent them an email yesterday to address a lot of the concerns that were mentioned earlier about keeping the distance. And one of the points I put on there is if you have worked too much or you feel tired, you need to tell me, because I need you to rest so that you can feel healthy. Trying to do everything I can to look after them. I think if you want to extend it, we can certainly work on our staffing to keep rotating it. It's, we're doing it enough that myself and the captain, we're all covering roles to make sure that we get people a break and give them a chance to stay home and sleep and not have to come to work.
And chief, while we got you talking, what have we done with this one checkpoint and work for Sullivan's own? That has sounded a bit, I would say?
It does. It does. There are some people that I think have made it through the checkpoint, but I think at the end of the day, if the goal was to accomplish social distancing, I definitely think that a walk on the beach would show you that that's the case. It's definitely, we don't see the crowds that we were seeing before we instituted the checkpoint, and even the calls for service on the island for police have taken a little bit of a lax, a little break for us here. We're still getting some calls here and there, but not nearly what I would expect at this time of year.
Fire. Come on up, so we can hear you.
All right.
Yeah, so is there anything that we can be doing for the fire department beyond the question I asked the doctor? Again, our goal is to get y'all safe as well as we can, you know, in place in fire. I mean, you're our first line of defense, but not just the line of defense, you're part of our city family, and you're credible to us.
Yep. So what Chief Corbett just added is the same for us. Obviously, the reduction of population has reduced the amount of calls, which is reducing our exposure. So it's been a wonderful experience for us. Obviously, it's been a, it's been a bit. So, I'm really well aware.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, any other, yes, sir?
Just a couple of comments about this ordinance in general, because I don't think we can overstate what we're doing here, and that this is, this is first and foremost for all of us up here about public safety and public health. And I'll echo the mayor in thanking our public safety officials, and we are, we're so grateful. And I don't think we'll ever feel short gratitude for everything that you do for us always, but in particular in times like this. So thank you. I know our residents all feel the same. And then, you know, just to continue hammering home what we heard from an expert in the field who's firsthand witnessing what's happening with the trends, helping our healthcare system deal with it. We know we here in Atlanta, their ICU is full, and their hospital system. And that's what we're trying to prevent, because if the ICU is full, then there's no place else to go. And, you know, that's a situation that we're trying to avoid. And the top leadership in the federal government from the health perspective, there are two quotes that I just wanted to read. One is from Dr. Burks, and the other is from Dr. Paochi, who are both, everyone is noticing that folks are fleeing the hotspots and how dangerous that trend is. And Dr. Burks said to everyone who has left New York over the last few days because of the rate of, the number of cases, you may have been exposed before you left New York, and everyone who has left New York should be quarantining, self-quarantining for the next 14 days so that the virus doesn't spread to others. We can't make people self-quarantine, but we can prevent people from coming here. And Dr. Paochi said, people want to get out of New York, and the idea, if you look at all the statistics, is disturbing. So we hear from our local leadership, we hear from our federal leadership in the medical profession, that this is, this is the prudent action, and Dr. O'Brien mentioned, you can't walk this back. And so proactive is the only way to be. So that's why.
Yes, sir?
I don't know about others, but I do have daughters and grandchildren that don't live here that love to come here. From a personal perspective, they're not allowed to come here. I mean, we're anticipating until this is over and we feel that the public good and the safety of everybody here is protected. You know, like you said, as a grandparent, that's a difficult thing to look at. It is the right thing to do, and we've had some questions, you know, come to us through email. Would you let your kids, would you let your nephew? I can tell you personally, the answer is absolutely not. They are sheltering in place where they're at. They are basically confined to the homes, homes for school, homes for everything, learning how to be children, that aren't allowed to play outside with their friends, and we shouldn't be any different here. And I, you know, I feel awful for the businesses, but I think the best thing for our businesses is to get the island back up and running as quickly as we can by taking prudent measures on the front end.
Doctor, I don't want to leave you out. Is there anything that you want to add to our?
No, it's complicated enough.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I, people sitting around these tables here, but over the past couple of days, it's just been an overwhelming response from our citizens advocating that we take the measures that we're proposing here today. And a lot of them are people who even own rentals themselves and say, shut it down, you know, let's go ahead, you know, shut it down for 30 days or whatever you think is prudent. And, you know, I'm a capitalist by nature. I hate to see anyone with a business that's affected adversely. And I really feel for the agencies. I feel for the restaurants. I feel for anyone on this island that's running a business right now, because they're going to be taking a hit in sales. I also agree, too, that the more prudent thing to do is to go ahead and put some rules in place here that would help keep our citizens safe. We all ran on the platform that we would listen to our citizens. We all ran on the platform that we would listen to our citizens. I think our citizens are speaking loudly and clearly that they want us to take this action here today. And I think, uh, uh, I think, uh, that would be the wisest thing for us all to do on behalf of everyone that lives here.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. And, um, I just wanna, we echo a lot of what was already said. I had strong concerns beforehand about the, uh, especially about cleaning in between rentals and having a, a continuous churn of, of new people coming in and then staying in the same quarters that other people, a whole other set of people were occupying just the day before. Um, that, I, that our expert from MUSC, if anything, he heightened my concerns even more, uh, based on his feedback, um, with the fact that we have large condominium complexes that are essentially hotel-like. And also several hotels, I think that concentration of people is really troubling when you're starting to talk about a lot of turnover, uh, during the spring. And even if it's low right now, it could bloom up again as people look to us as a, a haven. But we have to think about the stress that we're putting on our health system. And also just the message that we are sending, that we play a role in discouraging travel right now, which is a message that people should be sending across the country. This is a time, as Councilmember Bell said, to stay in place and, um, not help the spread of the virus.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second. And we've had ample discussion. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Yes, ma'am?
Is there other considerations that you all would, would like to include to the emergency ordinance? Such as any changes to the checkpoint? You all would need to entertain an, an, a motion to amend the existing ordinance? Because the, the original motion was to approve as am, as presented.
I, I, I will make a motion to line the dates up with the emergency ordinance that we're looking at and change the dates on the checkpoints to coincide with the date of this ordinance. It is April thirtieth.
A motion to amend to coordinate the police department checkpoints with the, uh, the date of April thirtieth? And we have a second. Um, any discussion?
Question. For central services, is that coming up later?
No, sir, we, we, we're talking about it now as for, um, is part of our, we've been kind of discussing it. The construction is going forward with proper cleansing. Um, I haven't heard anything else otherwise from any council member here. Um, so, I mean, if there's something that you want to add, let's go through this.
So, we're not, we're not touching, you know, takeout service from the restaurants or any of that stuff?
Everything is remained?
Everything's made the same?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Smith has a question?
Councilmember Smith.
Um, I just want to be clear that the ordinance would not affect property owners who are non-residents?
And then remains the same?
Okay, okay, good.
Okay, on the amendment, oh, did you have a question? Okay. Amendment, we're gonna vote first off, which is to coordinate the police timeframe with our, um, new, um, rental ordinance deadline of April the thirtieth. All those in favor of the amendment, signify. Saying, well, roll call.
Just, just for the record, so the amendment made by Councilmember Bell, who seconded the amendment?
Any else rest of these reasons?
Okay.
And the amendment was to include as part of the emergency ordinance, the exten, extending the checkpoints to coincide with the restriction of the short-term rentals through April thirtieth?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, would you do our roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson? Oh, Pounds, I'm sorry.
Aye.
And Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Okay, motion, uh, amendment.
The amendment passes unanimously. Now, back to the original motion. Okay, uh, back to the original motion. Rental, uh, use of short-term rentals, hotels, other overnight accommodations for twenty-nine days less, beginning ten AM Thursday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, through April the thirtieth, twenty-twenty, shall be prohibited. Visitors currently checked in may remain until the end of their existing reservations. Number two, any violation of any rule or regulation issued and set forth herein shall be punishable as provided in Title Nine, Chapter Two, Section Three. Uh, we have a amendment that's passed now for the motion, roll call, but, yes?
Councilmember Smith has a question?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember?
Sorry, I, I asked my question earlier. I guess I don't want it to be misconstrued that it was on the, um, concerning property owners being allowed on the island. I was trying to make sure that a property owner who has a short-term rental under this ordinance would still be allowed to use it, or is that correct?
If a person owns a house.
If it's a non-renter.
It's a non, not, say it's a second home. They can come to their, they can come to their house. They have to show proof that it's their house, whether it's a utility bill, a tax bill, whatever. But just proof of ownership.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question. Um, anyone else before we vote? Okay, roll call, please.
And you were voting on the vote?
For the original motion.
Voting on the original motion as amended?
As amended.
Okay. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
And Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Motion, um, um, emergencies? Oh, Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Okay, um, the.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I know this is a hard decision. Okay, um, do I hear another motion? Um, German?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.